Spending a little bit of time with us, we really appreciate too, the time that you spend working on school, things that are so important for all the students. Also, you know, just the fact that you're here tonight and the kind of the leadership that you've shown within your classes, you know, that's so significant. And we hope that you'll continue with that on into high school as well. So, thanks so much for everything you're doing. Okay, so then, Mr. Sortizio, I think you're gonna introduce your next presentation.
Yes, sir.
That's great. You could do that. Where's the band?
No band. I'm not saying there'll be no software. So, you know, as the board and the community are aware, we went on a long journey last year to examine the different options that were available to us in terms of enhancing the safety of our district. We settled on hiring our own and identifying that title as a school safety advisor. We went through a pretty intense interview process earlier this year, and Mr. Kappelmeier, who's a retired state trooper and Marine, was the candidate, and he has been here since...
October 1st.
October 1st you started?
Yes, sir.
Seems like longer than that. That's a good thing.
Or shorter.
So, I'm happy to introduce Mr. Kappelmeier, who's gonna give us an update on all things that have been going for him thus far.
Thank you. I think I know almost everybody here, but I'm Tim Kappelmeier, I'm the safety advisor since October 1st, so 90 days. Gonna talk a little bit about what we've done so far in the first 90 days here. Just wanna start out and say, I've really enjoyed getting to know the kids here, the student body, getting to know the faculty, working with the faculty in all different aspects. We're gonna start out with safety, okay? So far, I've become familiar with our district-wide safety plan. I've also become familiar with the school complex, including all entrances, exits, surveillance system, and alarms. Those of you that work in this building or spend some time in this building, I had never stepped foot in the school until I started working. And it takes a little while to accustom yourself with what, where to go and where everything is in the building, but I think I finally have that down pretty well. Participated in a fire drill and a lock-on drill. One thing that I do all day long is I walk a lot. I counted on my watch here. I think it's very, very important, and during the interview process, I said that, to me, it's important to be approachable and accessible. So, I go on daily patrols of all three schools, including checking doors, bathrooms, and hallways. Every morning, I check in with all three offices, sometimes special ed, too. Sometimes I don't get over there, but almost every day, elementary school, middle school, and high school, I'll check in in the morning, and also a lot of times before I leave at the end of the day, just to see what the recent daily activity is, or what to anticipate if there's something special happening that day. I've also attended and chaperoned several athletic events, the homecoming dance, the middle school day, the dead dance, and I also actually refereed the basketball game at their sports day. I've attended three-day conferences on school safety. I've assisted teachers and staff in dealing with safety issues and student well-being, incidents, and concerns. And I've also assisted the bus company with bus safety issues on a few occasions. My goal is, as far as safety, I want to assist in future school safety improvement plans for the capital project. Please help me out, 'cause I'll forget. Next thing I wanna talk about is mentoring. Maintain an accessible and approachable presence throughout the building. I do this not only by greeting the kids and saying goodbye to them at the end of the day, but I'll sit with students at breakfast time a lot and lunch, paying attention to the students that have been identified to me by the staff as people that might need some mentorship. So, it's not only the high school, you see me a lot in elementary school, breakfast and lunch, same thing, middle school, and also in the high school. I respond to questions, concerns from student staff and teachers immediately, and I follow up at a later time. As a police officer, I always found out that it's not only going to that initial call or complaint or concern, it's very, very important to follow up with people and let them know what you've discovered, or help them, just inform them what the outcome was, instead of just showing up the first time and that being the only time they have contact with me. Already talked about officiating the basketball game. I participated in the student and faculty badminton tournament. That was an event. I decided after that I'm better off with football and basketball and hockey and things like that, with a little more contact. I assist building administrators with interviewing students involved in incidences. I'll speak to students on the importance of being accountable for their actions, learning from their mistakes, and growing as a person. And I think we found that to be pretty effective, because I'm not here in a disciplinary role, and I immediately allow or let the kids know. I'm not here as a disciplinarian, and that's not my job. My job is to help you identify what happened here and compare it to real-life experiences. I shouldn't say real life, school is real life, but life after school. And we've been pretty successful with that so far, I think. As far as goals, I'm looking into the possibility of creating student, some more student mentorship programs here. Education. I have been in the classroom a little bit, and I have spoken in front of the student body. Spoke at high school career exploration day about career possibilities, as a New York State trooper, and also in the US military. I've assisted high school guidance on occasion, speaking with students interested in both law enforcement and military careers. I've arranged for one student to shadow a New York State Police Canine Trooper based on his interest in this possible career path. Spoke to elementary students my first month here about Halloween safety, actually sent a flyer home with the students, so the parents could see that. Also have read to them in the library and the role of a safety advisor, school bus safety, and overall personal safety. It's been enjoyable getting to know the elementary school kids that way. I also spoke to the community and the entire student body at the Veterans Day Assembly. Goal, when it comes to education, expand my presence in the classroom, assisting teachers with lessons on safety and other topics. Community connections. The first one, actually, I've had that, a lot of these, I had my 30-day plan that Sortizio wanted to see, but this one was, I thought, very, very important. I was able to obtain a radio allowing me to monitor and communicate with the local PDs. I think communication is very, very important. If there's an incident outside the building, I can hear it directly, I don't have to wait for them to call me. If there's an incident inside the building where we may need assistance, don't have to worry about getting to a phone right away. I have the radio, I have a microphone right here. It works very, very well. Have worked in direct relationships with the Fredonia PD to resolve some incidents. Have contacted the State Police to help with canines to perform a safety sweep, and have assisted some CPS workers with some investigations that we've had here. And also, I've had to deal with Dunkirk Central School, SRO, Silver Creek, and the Bosie School Resource Officer to help resolve some incidences that had also happened at those schools. My goal with this is to continue growing the relationship between myself and local law enforcement, to make that bond even stronger. Any questions on anything? I know that's a lot.
Mr. Kappelmeier, it's just great stuff. I'd like to defer. Any board members have any questions? Yeah?
In your 90 days, what have you identified, maybe, that you weren't expecting, any concerns, or things that you think we need to tackle as a district as it relates to safety or supporting students?
Actually, coming from working at Dunkirk and coming here, there are some safety issues, but things were, things are pretty safe, are pretty safe here. There are some little things, and we've talked about little things, but nothing like, you know, outstanding that really, you know, comes to my, comes to hit me. But I just think it's important, like I said all along, is I, being accessible to the kids. I think that's the most important thing, is for me to be able to build relationships with them, so that maybe they feel comfortable coming to talk to me, where they might not feel comfortable talking to one of their teachers or a parent. And it's amazing, sometimes, when you just sit at lunch and the kids come and they'll talk to you. Sometimes I'll sit at a specific table, other times I'll pick a different table, 'cause it's a way I kinda judge if I'm being accepted. I'll go into the middle school cafeteria, I'll sit down at a different table, and look to see if I'm sitting by myself. And if kids come and sit by me, I'm like, okay, they're, I'm approachable, they wanna come sit and talk to me. So, hopefully that...
Let me interject, though. You're being a little humble here. You have been in a group in observing our dismissal?
Yes.
Our late-day dismissal?
Yes.
You've been part of discussions on how we can better manage visitors to our building?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's a big component of safety. You shared with me that you witnessed a young person open a door for someone and allow them to circumvent our normal protocol?
Correct.
Right? So, that's a teachable component, that's a comment that I've made to this board. Our best defense is educating our students on how they, what role they play in terms of the safety of the building, and you handled that quite well, right? And it's just another example of why the presence is so important.
Tom, and Pete, and David, no, Chris, no, Brian, please say anything. So, Mr. Kappelmeier, just a couple of things relative to resources. Are there, are you feeling as though you have sufficient support? Are there things that might be useful that you foresee, just kinda most immediately, I guess?
As far as equipment, or...
Whatever you might think.
I know, without giving this too much, there's been talk about better ways to identify people in the building, correct? So, maybe some equipment, as far as that goes. I know there's some systems out there, I know Mr. Sterns actually was looking into that a little bit.
Okay.
So, something like that. As far as, as my equipment, no. As far as resources, the faculty and staff have been great. Any questions that I've had, they've answered for me, they've been very accepting, very hospitable, so...
Excellent. Then, relative to any sort of trainings or anything, are you, one, do you have some training things that you might wanna participate in that could be offered? Are there trainings that you think are critical that...
The more that I can be involved in training as far as with safety issues, or we talked about mentorship, I'm willing to explore and try anything to better our students.
I just have a little...
Yeah, Mr. Jambro.
You know, we spent a lot of time and effort, conversations and so on, into actually doing something different from the norm, okay? And we looked into a lot of different models and so on, and what we wanted, what we thought would work the best for our school. And we received some criticism for it, because of the time element, and I understand that. And I, as a parent, I can certainly understand that. But I think that, now that you've been here for a period of time, all that work and so on that went into that was well-spent, because you have certainly, your performance has exceeded our expectations of what we wanted for our school. And this is unique, but we wanted something for our school and our students. And, you know, the old saying is, you need the right tool for the job, you're certainly the right tool.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Kappelmeier, I very appreciate your doing. Okay. Mr. Sortizio, you and Mr. Forbes, I think, are gonna be talking about reserves, and you have time enough to, got a lot of information that was sent out, and we appreciate that, so if you could maybe lead us in there, I think you'd really appreciate it.
I wanna make one additional comment on our school safety advisor, and thank you, Mr. Jambro, for expressing that sort of eloquent... The one other component that we haven't talked about yet is how many times the police have been called to our campus this year? And it's been four, right? One or two that they initiated, 'cause they needed some assistance with some issues, and the others were because we needed some assistance with issues. You'll recall that last year at this time, the number was at least three, three or four times higher than that. So, you know, presence is important, the presence and approachability are really what make the program work. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your efforts every day.
Thanks, Mr. Sortizio.
So, on to the riveting discussion about reserve funds. After three great presentations, I have to tell Mrs. Forbes that next time I get to go first. But I did provide the board with the same recommendation that Mr. Forbes and I put together for the audit committee, as well as information on what acceptable reserves are available to us via New York State. I know I sent that out via the email not too long ago. I'll do my best to answer any questions you have, you may have. I do know that the Audit Committee and I need to settle on a date where we can get back to data before these actually become board action items. So, if you have any questions about the reserves or any of your recommendations, feel free to ask, I'll do my best to answer.
Dan, let's start with Mr. Jambro, why don't you...
I don't, just kind of...
Excellent, then, Mr. Hawk.
Just along with what Mr. Sortizio said, at the Audit Committee, most of what we were discussing was not really seeing many alternatives as to new fines. It was basically utilizing the same types of reserves, maybe creating an additional reserve, which would be possibly the capital reserve for a capital project. I think it would be important to find out when debt service is gonna end, as some type of presentation by Mr. Forbes, by email to the rest of the board members, to realize how long it would be before we'd be able to act on any types of reserves in that fashion. Without, because similar to what the capital project is now, this eight-and-a-half-million-dollar project, we're not seeing an increase or influx in tax to the tax levy because of the debt service ending on Visions 2000s. And I don't know if that's part one and part two, but the only thing that I've seen from the paperwork that I gathered was 2031 for the XL program, so, you know, just to have some sort of insight as to the length of time before any of that reserve is able to be used.
Okay. So, just to clarify, Mr. Hawk is talking about a capital reserve, and that would need to receive approval from the voters. The district typically, a district typically puts out a number, it could be, you know, up to $500,000, up to $750,000, up to a million, whatever the board decides to put forth to the voters. If the voters approve it during the May election, the district then has six years to fund that line, so the money doesn't have to go in the next day, it can go in any time of the next, any time of the next six years, but it needs to be utilized in the next 10 years. So, you do have time, and you're absolutely right, when's our next debt service coming off, because that's when you're gonna plan your next project. That way, you can either do repairs or improvements to the infrastructure of the district without unburdening the taxpayer, okay? If for some reason a district did not utilize those funds within 10 years, that money simply goes back to the general fund, right?
Mr. Hawk, anything else beyond that? At this point, and Mr. Forrester? And Ms. Gagichats?
Nothing.
Ms. Powell-Forten?
Nothing.
And Mr. Aldrich?
Nothing right now.
Okay. If I could just ask a few things, and I just wanted to try to understand, this district fund balance reserve fund sheet, the one page, I was just a touch confused, and I wanna just check this. So, we said, part of the reserves concerns the capital reserve fund, the $500,000, I think that we authorize, or the voters authorize.
Correct.
And it says here, the October 24, 2017 meeting, board approved the funding of the additional $200,000. I just need to ask, is that money actually, has that then gone into that reserve?
Yes, you, when we did the original transfer, the community authorized the total $500,000. The original transfer was $300,000, which was based upon the timing at that time of fund balance and so forth. So, we transferred the other $200,000 with board approval into there to get your $500,000 total capital reserve fund, which was not on top of this part.
Okay. Yeah, I was just a little bit confused by that, 'cause it says financial impact. Is this like, and so then, so that took me to number two, which has the retirement contribution reserve, and this looks like the proposal is to move 1, 2, 5,000 into that. Okay, and so, when we talk about financial impact, that's truly then $125,000 that would go from unappropriated into that fund, right? Okay. And then, also, the tax surceurary reserve fund. I'm then reading that just as I read number two, and so the proposal there is that you have $50,000 that's proposed for that. Okay. And then, then, the proposal, depending upon the debt service, and that would be interesting, and then just, Mr. Hawk, how you would kinda read that together with the Mr. Sortizio and Mr. Forbes, you know, whether the proposal would be for this May or another time? I guess that becomes the question. And as I understood it, you're talking about $750,000 as a proposal, possibly, with the idea that we would actually use 375 to go into that fund if we got the voters' approval. And so, so this is in front of the Audit Committee, correct?
Correct.
And so, I take it that the Audit Committee, your next meeting, you'll be discussing this, and will you be making a final recommendation to the board, then?
I believe at that point, we would be prepared to.
Okay, that's great. And Mr. Forbes, and Mr. Sortizio, you'd be able to get the debt service information out?
Yeah, that'd be great. That's good.
Two other points, I wanna make sure the board is aware of. I was asked the question if it's possible to use a reserve for future unexpected special education costs, and currently that is not available to us. There is some movement in the state to create a TRS reserve, Teacher Retirement System Reserve, similar to the ERS reserve that we currently utilize. That would provide districts a way to, a way to offer themselves protection should our TRS contribution increase down the road. That has not been approved yet. I'm hopeful, it makes a lot of sense, because our contributions fluctuate based on the market, so why shouldn't districts be able to protect themselves and their taxpayers by utilizing such reserve? So, more information on that to follow when it becomes available.
That's great. And so then, we may have recommendations at maybe a February board meeting or March meeting, it sounds like. Okay, excellent. Then, okay, just your last presentations. Boy, thanks, everyone, I really appreciate your presentations and involvement. Then, that takes us to Roman numeral nine. This is the opportunity to hear from the public generally. Board is reserved this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return to Ms. Slagel, who's right there at the end of the table. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on any issue whatsoever? Please, if you don't mind, we have a microphone here, and if you'd be so kind...
Hello, I'm a little nervous. Good evening, Mr. Sortizio, members of the board and administrators. As many of you know, I am a former Fredonia Central School District employee. I had the privilege and good fortune of working as an ESL and math teacher for this district for over 15 years. While the majority of my career was in the middle school, I have also worked in the elementary and high schools. I value the experience that the district provided me, as well as the relationships I was able to build over the years. Thirteen years ago, my husband and I purchased a home in Fredonia in hopes that someday we would be blessed to have children and send them to school here. We were, and we currently have, two daughters enrolled in grades one and three, respectively. I cannot say enough good things about the elementary teachers that my kids have had throughout their educational career. I know firsthand how hard the teachers in this district work. I say with certain confidence, the teachers in this district are among the best of the best. I could go on and on about how fortunate we are to have such hard-working and caring individuals, but this is not why I'm here tonight. It was stated during the last board meeting that many past boards hadn't wanted such comprehensive, detailed budget information. Simply put, I cannot understand that mentality. I am here because I commend the board on requesting more detailed information about the spending that goes on each and every day, and I urge you to continue asking questions on this behalf. Some things to consider. It was also stated at last board meeting that, to quote, "The revenue report could be gone over monthly, but that's a lot of information." Yes, I'm sure it is, but we are not talking about nickels and dimes here. We are talking about millions of dollars, funding that in part comes from Fredonia taxpayers. We have an amazing sports program here at Fredonia, most notably an Olympic gold medal winner that graduated class of 2000. Additionally, the district currently employs a former Olympic wrestling coach, and our district has had state wrestling champions, as well as multiple baseball state championships in recent years. Well, these are some of the more prestigious titles all of Fredonia's athletic teams have produced highly competitive athletes that are among the best, not only in the area, but in the state and beyond. Yet, despite these accomplishments, the Fredonia sporting facilities are less than subpar, putting it mildly. A track that was updated, yet only redone to six lanes instead of eight, making it impossible to have dual meets. A football field that was routinely flooded. A soccer field that cannot even be played on. Not to mention the lack of outside restrooms, just to note a few. It has also been mentioned on several occasions that the district has considered charging faculty to use the district weight room. Blankly stated, that is absurd. Besides being completely outdated, it is shared between faculty, PE classes, and student athletes. We live in a technological world, yet Fredonia's technology seems to always be a step behind that of surrounding districts. Programs are being purchased and implemented without teacher input. There are still classrooms with little to no computer access and using outdated textbooks. Yet, we expect our children to be put to the test and make it in the real, fast-paced digital world, competing with their peers that have had that access to the highest technological products being made. The facilities themselves are an eyesore. I know firsthand the appearance of many classrooms, including the bathrooms that are located in each of the buildings. The carpets are old, the bathroom doors are missing locks and have graffiti all over them, and there are stains on the ceiling tiles, most likely from leaks that have drainage dripping into buckets in the hallways. Is this how we want the public to see our school? Lastly, I, as well as the public, am fully aware that a large part of the budget is allotted towards salaries, insurance, and benefits. There are outside contractors that provide necessary services that we need to pay. There are codes that need to be met, maintenance that must be upheld. That being said, I also know there is money that is being spent in frivolous ways. I know that there are programs lacking, yet money is directed in places that don't necessarily need it. I implore that you, the board, and you, the public, continue to seek answers on your behalf. As a taxpayer and parent, I will continue to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Yeah, please.
Andy Ludwig, 30 Ryan, please. Mr. Bob, seeing you start the meeting, you said that I was out of order. I didn't think my question at the beginning of the meeting was out of order before I heard Mr. Kappelmeier's presentation, and after listening to Mr. Kappelmeier's presentation, I don't think my question was out of order. But let me just state this, okay? Mr. Kappelmeier talked about being a Marine, he talked about speaking to students about careers in the military, he talked about mentoring relationships. We heard from the middle school student council, they talked about leadership. A junior ROTC program would do all those things. You had the perfect opportunity to ask Mr. Kappelmeier while he was here, how he felt about a JROTC program. You didn't do that. You won't answer my questions. It makes me think that you won't support a JROTC program in the high school. So, why would you not answer, ask his questions while he was sitting right here? You could've asked him, you know, did he have experience with a JROTC program? What does he think about a JROTC program? Mr. Kappelmeier stated that he worked at Dunkirk. Dunkirk has an extremely successful JROTC program. Mr. Sortizio's wife works in Dunkirk, I'm sure that he could ask her about their JROTC I'm sure that he could ask her about their JROTC program. I'd just like to know how I was out of order, because I wasn't. But I also like an answer. Will you support a JROTC program here at Fredonia High School?
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on any issue? If not, thank you. That would take us then to announcements, board correspondence. So Board of Education workshop meeting will be held Thursday, January 24 at 6:00 PM in the high school. Just wondering, would it make any sense at all for us to consider moving it just a little bit earlier because of the game and so on, either 5:00 or 5:30? Is that even a possibility?
You were facing that lane, I didn't hear you, so please stay in.
Yeah, sorry. Got it scheduled right now for.
The games at 7:30 would be nice and that's when the game starts. That's what you're referring to.
Right, so, yeah. Would it make any sense to move it to 5:00 or 5:30?
Start over again so I know what you're talking about.
The meeting on Thursday night, scheduled to start at 6:00. Could we start at 5:00 or 5:30?
Mr. Bosie, I'm sorry, I wouldn't be able to get here, I have a work obligation. I wouldn't be able to get here before, probably quarter to 6:00 would be the earliest.
Could we do quarter to 6:00?
Really?
I mean, at least get us that 15 minutes.
Well, you're a 6:00?
Six is already there.
6:00, come on.
Okay, 6 o'clock. Just trying to, you know, I mean, we're going to lose Mr. Jambro and probably everybody else. I mean, it does limit it.
Well, so then we have a half an hour. We need to be focused and.
We have to work.
I'm hearing, yeah. I mean, it's easy for all of us to commit to that tonight, so, okay, 6 o'clock.
90 minutes.
It's all better to be open for redirection Thursday night, okay? I'm just mad if I bring it back to you.
Yes. Which is a soothing loss.
Nope, I'm hearing you. Okay. Then next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held February 12 at 6:00 PM in the high school library. So, Mr. Sortizio, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to bring to the board's attention that there is a policy in place when there's a request from a member of the public to learn of a program or discuss a program or perhaps implement a program. It is not your job, it never has been your job, to research a program. Your work is really to direct me on whether that's something you, you think we should pursue and we should look at. My job is to delegate it to the appropriate person. So we've had two times now, a member of the public ask about a JROTC program, which I actually have looked into a little bit, Mr. Kackelmeier have, and I have discussed it, the expense involved and the personnel that you would need to have to truly run it correctly. If you would like further examination, then it was really, it's a high school program, so it would really be Mr. Pashke's responsibility to look into it. First to determine if there, if there's interest beyond the individual student who came to us and then whether it's, we can really bring it to fruition. So I know that you're looking at other programs as well. I'm not directing you at this point to look at it, but just to be clear about what board policy, what role play. Other than that, you know, I know we're in exam week. It's supposed to be icy tomorrow morning. It'll be a planned place if we have to, if we have to do anything weather-wise. Other than that, no more spoons under the pillow tonight.
Mr. Aldrich, Kenny? No. Ms. Lisa Powell-Forten? Ms. Gagenchance? Mr. Forster? No, Mr. Hock?
A thought just came to mind as I heard Mr. Sortizio talking about the issue of the junior ROTC. If you look into that and it's not something that we can move forward with here at our school, is there a possibility of sending a student to another school or a certain period of time?
That's a great thought. Mr. Jambro, anything? No? Excellent. Then why don't we start with you, Ms. Peckert?
I'd like to congratulate our fourth grade select chorus that Mrs. Hartung left, but they present, or performed at Canita's College last Sunday for one of their games and did a marvelous job, it was wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Hartung, she does great things. I also want to announce our sixth annual Global School Day of Play. This is an international day that many schools participate across the world when we spend the day playing. So that will be February 6th and we're very excited about this. Students go outside and play board games and do lots of fun things that day. So it's a day of instructor play and students love it.
Ms. Traum.
I think just reiterating what student council said, we had a great dance on Friday night. We had 67 kids show up. They were all dressed up. It was so nice to see them in nice clothes and, you know, they didn't dance, just to say that. They looked nice, yeah. But I, I thought next time we might want to teach them how to dance before the dances. Something to contemplate, but again, they're doing a great job.
Thanks so much. And Mr. Pashke?
Just want to thank again the, the band for their tremendous presentation tonight. Mr. Bennett, Mrs. Terrier, congratulations again for, for your accomplishments. We are in the middle of our midterm and Regents Week right now, so our students are busy studying and hopefully performing outstandingly on their exams. And then lastly, just wanted to mention that our ninth grade academic intervention service teachers have been meeting to discuss how we can improve the services that we're providing to our ninth graders. And one of the things that we are looking at starting in the second semester is something called Check and Connect. And we've identified some students that could get a little bit, a little bit of help with organizational skills, study skills, checking in with teachers, having the teachers play a role in their, making sure that they're caught up with all of their work. And what's awesome about this, this came from our teachers and they identified the things that they thought were important to help our kids with and they volunteered to do this. So this is something we're looking at starting in the, in the second semester.
That's great.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Pashke. It's a component of MTSS, which we've talked about a lot.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, and Mr. Forbes? Ms. Farrell? Ms. Slagel? Excellent. Okay. Then, boy, appreciate everyone in your attendance and in comments that you made and so on. We anticipate the need to enter into executive session to discuss matters regarding particular personnel. After the conclusion of our executive session.